Good evening. We'll call the meeting to order, please, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Roll call, Mr. Lambert?
Allam.
Yes.
Odie is absent tonight. Saxor?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Bell?
Okay, with that, we would like to extend our condolences to the Odie family on the loss of Greg's mom. So, thinking of you. Next, approval of the agenda. If there's no changes, I would entertain a motion to approve, please. Second? There's been a first and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. No conflict of interests, closure, or waiver requests this evening, and community input? No one had approached Superintendent Larson about that? Is there... doesn't look like there's anyone from the community that would need to speak tonight? Takes us to general business items. Under Administration Report, Superintendent's Report, Superintendent Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few items to update on the board on here this evening, prior to the State of the Schools address. Strategic planning, we continue to work through that respective process, and I will comment on that more later in the meeting. Eastside Elementary School construction, that opening is delayed one year for infrastructure planning and development. I would say that right now, the city of Brandon is evaluating a couple of different options in terms of the sanitary sewer trunk line right now. So they are evaluating those respective options. We have provided feedback to them in terms of which option we would prefer. The option that we do prefer is the more expensive option, however, it better suits the long-term growth of the community of Brandon in our respective opinion, but we also are understanding of their respective situations. So, no change to that. Opening delayed one year at this point in time, set to open for the fall of 2026, for the 26-27 school term. Would note on that that, once their eastside sanitary sewer trunk business is finalized, we may actually look to bid that project a bit earlier in the year than we normally did, basically giving ourselves a couple of years to complete that large project as opposed to like the 18 months. So, we'll see how that timeline comes together, but if possible, we will push that that bid timeline earlier into the year to give us a little bit more time. Legislative breakfast is scheduled for Thursday, December 7th, at 7:00 a.m. in the community room. Please make certain and check your schedule. I inadvertently had 7:30 on my last superintendent's report, so please check that and make certain that you have 7:00 a.m. on the 7th. Legislative session is coming up, and we are in mode to prepare for that. The Governor's Budget Address will be on December 5th. The session opens on January 9th. The last day of regular session is March 7th, and then they have one one day reserved later in March for vetoes. So, thereby, by March 7th, we should have some, obviously, understanding in terms of what we're looking at in terms of legislative action from this session. Next year's academic calendar is in progress of being developed. It's consistent in corresponding. We work through our respective councils to provide feedback on that. I would anticipate having a presentation, or an initial draft presentation, for you at our first meeting in January with potential action at our second meeting. And then, we obviously are ramping up and getting into the budget preparation timeline. Our administration completes five-year plans and submits them to the Central Office. That's really the initial phase of our budget development processes. That guides us in terms of what the asks are, for lack of a better phrase. And then, January through March, we deal with forms being... forms and documents being distributed, completed and compiled. In February, you'll receive a presentation of the five-year plan. In March, we will approve any new staffing positions that we have. I would note, there will be very, very limited new staffing positions, but that is what that timeline looks like. And then, we'll also utilize March for that preliminary capital outlay budget approval. Those are the big-ticket items that require procurement processes, and then ultimately dictate how much you can do. So, you'll see that in March. In May, you'll have the preliminary presentation, and in July, we will look to hold our public presentation, or our public hearing, and then also have action. This year's academic calendar, December 21st is a two-hour early dismissal. Winter break runs December 22nd through January 2nd. January 15th, there is no school for students, and that is a half-day flexible workshop for our staff. And then, into February, February 16th, there is no school, and February 19th, no school. That is President's Day weekend. So, Madam Chair, at this time, that is all I have. Would certainly entertain any questions that you have.
All right, hearing none, we can move on. Board policy, there is none tonight. That takes us to our general business item. The first one, the 2023-2024 State of the Schools address.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to provide the board and the community with the State of the Schools address. This State of the School dress, State of the Schools address includes information from the 22-23 Accountability Report Card, as well as a facility update in terms of where we are at for enrollment and capacity of buildings for this school year. I want to talk a little bit about the strategic plan and our revision and amendment process, and then also want to talk a little bit about next year in terms of staffing and budget at a high level. So, would just note that all of the contents of this in terms of academic data is available on the South Dakota Department of Education website in... within their report card information. You can search "school," you can search "district," you can search "state," and all of those breakdowns and all of that information is there. I would tell you, there is a tremendous amount of data available to the public to look at and to dive into. What I will provide will be a very high-level overview. When we start to talk about school accountability and academic data, I think that it's incredibly important for us to wrap our arms around the fact that there is one ultimate goal, and that is student learning and improved academic performance of our kiddos. And I am absolutely convinced that across the district and all of our buildings, our administration does an excellent job of utilizing the data available to them to help guide their staff when making data-driven decisions, and it is certainly something that within the Brandon Valley School District, our administration, as well as our staff, lean into in terms of decision-making, whether it be curriculum, whether it be instruction. And that's on a daily basis, on a unit basis, and on a large-scale, year-long basis. So, ultimate goal is student learning and improved academic performance, and I can tell you that that is held fast by our leadership as well as our staff. So, a school performance index, or SPI, what that is, is it's ultimately a number that is assigned to your respective school, and it's up to 100 points possible. The high school is different than the elementary, intermediate, and middle school, and these are the respective Brandon Valley School District SPI scores. Overall, tons and tons of things to be proud of within our data. I'm going to tip my hat to a couple of groups throughout the presentation, and undoubtedly will miss many, many, many folks who have done great things, but there are a few things I do want to... do want to specifically highlight. So, this is our third and fourth grade ELA and math performance data. As you can see, Brandon Valley is in the black and the red, and the state is in... vanilla? Yellow? Beige? Okay, beige. We'll go with beige. So, third and fourth graders in the Brandon Valley School District in English Language Arts, 74% of our third and fourth graders proficient or advanced. State of South Dakota, 46% of third graders, third and fourth graders in ELA proficient or advanced. For elementary math, 72% of Brandon Valley School District third and fourth graders are proficient or advanced in math, 49% respectively for the state of South Dakota. This is our intermediate school ELA and math performance. English Language Arts, 71% of our fifth and sixth graders were proficient or advanced in ELA, comparison to the state at 46%. In mathematics, 64% of our intermediate school kiddos were proficient or advanced in comparison to the state. The state's 39%. And this is an area that I do want to give a shout-out. We saw quality growth in terms of the percentage of students that were proficient or advanced in math at the intermediate school level, and I would tell you that I do think it has bearing that they have taken a laser-like focus to utilizing the interim assessments, which are provided by the state of South Dakota. The interim assessments are directly aligned to the Smarter Balance assessment. But there's been a laser-like focus at the intermediate level there, and I would tell you that we have seen good quality results with the utilization of that approach. So, hats off to them and the growth that we've seen there. Seventh and eighth grade, so at the middle school level, 67% of our seventh and eighth graders were proficient or advanced in ELA in comparison to 50 within the state of South Dakota. And then, in the area of mathematics, at the seventh and eighth grade level, 57% of the Brandon Valley School District seventh and eighth graders were proficient or advanced in comparison to 39% in the state of South Dakota. This is a look at our science performance data. Science, the science assessment takes place in grades 5, 8, and 11. So ultimately, in fifth grade science, 67% of Brandon Valley students were proficient or advanced in comparison to the state of South Dakota, where there were 39% of South Dakota fifth graders proficient or advanced in fifth grade science. Eighth grade science, 58% Brandon Valley students. 58% of Brandon Valley eighth graders were proficient or advanced in science in comparison to 38% of eighth graders in South Dakota. And then, lastly, in terms of science performance with our juniors, 64% were proficient or advanced in the science assessment in comparison to 52% of 11th graders in the state of South Dakota. High school ELA and math performance. Our 11th graders last year, 81.5% were proficient or advanced in ELA. In the state of South Dakota, 65% of our juniors were proficient or advanced. In the area of math, 64% of our Brandon Valley High School 11th graders were proficient or advanced, and 38% of our state's 11th graders were proficient or advanced in math. English Language Learner Progress, this is the percentage of our EL students that are on track to exit our EL programming. 41% of our EL students are on track to exit on time in comparison to the state of South Dakota, where 32% of our EL students are on track to exit on time. This is another area that I would like to highlight. We saw quality growth in this area as well. I believe that last year, I just looked at it, it was like 32 or 33%. Brandon Valley was at 32 or 33%. So, we saw nice growth in terms of the percentage of our EL students that were on track to exit. So, that was another highlight. So hats off to our EL program. This is our 2023 ACT data. As you can see, we are nearly four points higher than the United States Composite Score and nearly 2.5 points higher than the South Dakota Composite. So, this is obviously very good information. It is most certainly relevant to note that not all of our students take the ACT. Just like in the state of South Dakota, not all students take the ACT at this time. So that is just something to note. It is not required.
Do you know what percentage take the ACT?
For us, it's about 70. Yeah, year in and year out, 65 to 75-ish.
Thank you.
Yep. Graduation rate and completion rate in the Brandon Valley School District, we're at 97% for on-time graduation or for-year cohort graduation, 97% in terms of high school completion, whereas the state is 84% for on-time high school graduation, but 91% completers. I think it's very, very important that we acknowledge the collective whole when we talk about our achievement data. And when I say that, I think about not only the classroom teachers that are the lifeblood of our school, but I think about the administration that's leading them, and then compounded by the families that support our schools, and then, of course, the great kids that we have sitting inside of our classrooms. All of that is compounded by an incredibly supportive community that holds us to high expectations, and it is collectively that whole that produces the top-quality student achievement results that we get. It really does. It really does take a village, for lack of a better phrase, and we would be missing out if we didn't point to all of the players involved in our success and just say thank you, not only to the sports staff and the classroom teachers and everyone who makes the daywork, but also our families as well as our community. They really have a significant impact on what we are able to do. Without their support, it couldn't be possible. So, we prepare for the future together, and it takes all of us. So, a special thank you to our students, our families, and our community for the role that they play in our student achievement. Facilities-wise, Brandon Elementary, so we have 681 kiddos at Brandon Elementary. That includes our Early Childhood Program. Without our Early Childhood kiddos, we have 649 students JK through grade 4. Fred Assam is just under 500. Inspiration Elementary is at 320. Robert Benis Elementary is at 562. Valley Springs Elementary is at 67. The Intermediate School is at 785. Excuse me. The Middle School is at 719, and the High School is at 1356. Obviously, the second number is the building capacity. So, as we look at this, I would ask you to think a little bit about and envision, BV Vision 2040, and what we have going on. So, Valley Springs Elementary will close at the end of this respective school year. Those 67 kids go to Brandon Elementary. As you can see, they fit. The capacity works. Fred Assam Elementary is at 499. Inspiration Elementary is at 320. We built Inspiration Elementary because Fred Assam was full, i.e., pulled a lot of capacity out of there. Those two buildings are continuing to see some growth. Robert Benis Elementary is at 562, grades K through 4. We took the junior kindergarten out of Robert Benis Elementary to make room so that we could operate K4 there, moving all of our J-Cares ultimately from RBE to BE. Get to the Intermediate School, 785 out of 875. After we build East, so our next building project will be East to alleviate capacity pressure out of Robert Benis, which is obviously the closest to that 600 point. So we build East, that's the first project. But after we build East, the next building project that we will have on tap will be Intermediate School South. So you can see as the Intermediate School is more closely approaching its capacity. We're talking about 2027-ish, give or take, growth over the course of the next few years, but that's about that timeframe. And then, after we build the Intermediate School, then we'll be at a place where we need to have that conversation about the middle school. Once we hit the trigger point there, we'll need to talk about an addition at the middle school or something else. So, we're not to that point yet, but we are approaching it. So it's just something to think about. And then, lastly, our high school capacity, 2028. So we can fit over 2,000 students in our high school, currently at 1356. Lots of room to grow. No second high school on the horizon for decades. So whenever you're asked at the grocery store or at the gas station, let them know that you have room for 600-some-odd kiddos, and that conversation can be put to bed for the next couple of decades. Questions on current enrollments and/or capacities? Good. Strategic Plan Review, just want to note, these are your five respective domains. These are the five respective domains of your strategic plan. Under each of these domains, we have components and then action strategies listed within and underneath each one of those components. Currently working through a process with our focus groups, taking a look at strengths of the district, weaknesses of the district, and then opportunities or strategies for improvement. Our respective focus groups are getting those respective individual feedback forms, providing those back, and that's really the focus here this fall. The Board of Education, you will receive the same focus group individual feedback form that you will provide back to ultimately the Central Office. So that's what we're doing here this fall. In the winter, we will conduct our BV Listens 3.0 survey. It's hard to believe, but this will be actually our third BV Listen survey, which is a work environment survey, and that will be done in addition to a community survey that will be sent to families, parents, as well as made accessible to community members to provide feedback regarding our strategic plan, domains, components, and action strategies. And then, here in the spring, we will hold a... it won't be a board meeting. It will just simply be a meeting for the public regarding strategic planning. There will be a public meeting, and then later in the spring, I'll bring to you the draft of our revised strategic plan, outlining what we discovered through our review, revision, and feedback process, and then ultimately bring it forward for your approval. Might... board approval might sneak to July, June or July, depending upon how quickly we can get it all put together, but you can expect to see a plan for your adoption here late spring or by July for sure. So, a little bit of a look ahead for budget and staffing, and I think that it's important to say this publicly and to everyone. Obviously, you guys know what our current enrollment did. It was below our projection. With the closure of Valley Springs Elementary at the end of this respective school year, we will have staff that will be, for lack of a better phrase, utilized in areas of need throughout the district. So, Ms. Mutter currently serves as halftime principal, halftime assistant, Special Education Director. We will shift her halftime, obviously shift her halftime Valley Springs Elementary administrative position somewhere else within the district. We have a couple of options. We're not quite ready to nail that down yet. There are a number of options that we are evaluating. There are four and a half classroom teachers available, so for lack of a better phrase, that's kindergarten through grades 4. But your fourth grade teacher currently serves as a halftime art teacher, so they obviously aren't available for that portion of the respective days. So we'll have four and a half classroom teachers to redistribute. There's one special ed teacher. I didn't even try and break down the availability of our encore teachers because they go out to Valley for like two hours on Tuesday and three hours on a Wednesday. So it's... There's an assortment of additional encore teachers that will have time available within their schedule that we will most certainly utilize. And then, obviously, our classified staff. We have a clerical out there that will be utilized as clerical elsewhere in the district. We have multiple custodians, multiple education assistants. There's child nutrition staff, some part-time. They'll all be utilized or redistributed. So with that being said, it is very important to note that we will have very limited additional new staffing for next year as you're staffed out for over 5,100 students and you're at 5,160. So, 5,016, I should say. So, we can and should and will expect a limited number of new FTE, quote-unquote, for this next respective school year.
Will this provide any additional capacity in the Transportation Department? And if so, is it substantial, or do we know?
I would say very little change in terms of capacity within the Transportation Department. There is some potential for probably some routing efficiency with the number of kids we have coming from one area to one area. So you may pick up some routing efficiency, but it's... it won't have any significant impact on capacity for transportation. No. Questions on next year's budget or outlook, I should say? It's obviously not the budget, but I do think it's important to know kind of where we're at in terms of the staffing component. As typically, you guys see somewhere between $700,000 to $1 million in staffing, and that is most certainly not what you'll see this year. With that, would certainly entertain any additional questions that you have.
Real quick, going back to the State of Schools that you laid out. Not a specific question, just more of a comment. Remember, Scott may have picked it up while he was at the delegate meeting. A big topic for things that might be at the Hill this year is on testing. So we really, just what you said, echo so much of the effort that all of our staff, teachers, students, parents put into testing. Maybe the misperception is that that testing is for each student and what we do for that each student, or that we do the testing so that we can get a good school ranking. Really, those are not the function of the test itself. It's really about, comes down to accountability. It's maybe not the best tool, but it's the best tool we have. And so, we have a lot of legislators that they look at what they give to the schools in education as an investment, and they need to know what they're getting back for that investment because they give that money elsewhere. And so when you look at a school like Brandon Valley and you look at the money that is given to education, public education, and we're able to say, we give everything that we can to our teachers because we know that's who needs it, because they're going to support education, and then we're able to show in accountability how the students do. And so, and we know that's because the students are also putting their heads down and really doing the work, and the parents are supporting them. So we know that testing is not always the most fun. We know that there comes with some anxiety. I remember doing the test myself. But we really do appreciate every single amount of effort that's put forth because it really does come down to accountability, and I don't know that there's another better way to do it. And so when we go back to the legislators and say, more money, public education, it's necessary, it's needed, not just for the infrastructure, but really what's most important is for the students within the buildings, and here's why, and here's what we're doing with it, and producing good results, really. And in the state, the best results. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Larson. Consent items, I would entertain a motion to approve items 2 to 4 as presented, please.
So moved.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Personnel, I would entertain a motion to approve items 1 through 6 as presented.
So moved.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. That takes us to Board Reports. Does anyone have a formal board report they would like to share this evening?
I guess I'll comment on the ASBSD Delegate Assembly that was out in Pierre on Friday, the 17th. It was a good turnout. I think the numbers were a little low, but I would say average, typical for the meeting. Obviously, it's great to see familiar faces and show up and really support our kids. our kids and, like we'd said, staff and everybody. Um, there was 30 resolutions that were recommended for continuation. Obviously, that, there's, there's no, um, form of action for those, but there was 21 resolutions that were recommended for actions for either deletion, adoption, or amendment. Surprisingly, there was seven of each, seven deletions, uh, seven adoptions and seven amendments. I think the... It was, it was pretty, pretty comical, I guess. I would say, um, for the most part, it went very smoothly. The only thing that was really a hiccup is there was certain, um, schools that have had certain situations that came up and the wording, as we all know, you know, you put one word in there and it can change the whole sentence or, um, putting a word in between other words. So, that was, that was more the hiccup that took a little bit more time, but, um, very well-needed. And, um, I guess I would say it's, it's nice to see that we actually take the time to do things right and, um, it was a good meeting. So, I appreciate it and look forward to legislation.
Uh, the only thing I add, uh, we had the executive director meeting prior. Um, we do have a new, um, executive director at the helm. Wade Pogony has moved on, uh, and Dr. Wurmedal is new to the process. And so, um, I'm sure he'll do a fine job for us, but he's gotta establish all new relationships. And so, what they ask is, um, of ASBSD is, especially this year, but I mean, we should be doing it every year, is for issues that we believe may be very detrimental to public education, is as they kind of hit the floor or as they're coming, is for more support. And I will do my very best to send those out. Hitting up our legislators that we know, especially better, some of us have better relationships than others, but as they get emails, there are many of them that just do tally marks. They don't even read them, they just go, yep, I heard this many times. And all it's gotta say in the, in the line, the subject line is, I approve or I don't support. And they start keeping tally marks of how many times they've heard for or against something. Um, and that's, I know that seems not to be the greatest way to communicate, but that's all they have time for. And so, that might be our best way we can support education. And that's not just for ASBSD, that might be for the large schools. Um, but we really may need to give a bigger voice this year. I don't foresee that there's gonna be some huge issues. Uh, right now, we're putting, at least my voice was, is that all goes to funding. We just want all the funding as much as we can to come our way. But if there's some other divisive ones that come, we just may need some extra voices.
Thank you. Anyone else have any other formal meetings? All right. A couple of travel reports there for your review. And with that, it looks like we are at the end of our agenda. I would entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much.